Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Being done, moving on to the approval of minutes of November 18th, 2021.
I guess I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2021.
Who's going to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, Pete, I was not a part of that, so I'm going to abstain from it, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Creach?
Yes.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swercoff?
Abstaining. I was not present.
Stokes?
Abstain.
Okay. Hudson is absent and Lubek?
Abstain.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, being all unfinished business to new business. Yes, sir.
Under unfinished business, I'd like to back up on, I see Thursday of September 16th, 2021, when it, on the board it says right here, Mr. Christmas says, Creach replied he had been serving on the zoning board for four years and is waiting to be reappointed. Mr. told him to remark that Mr. Creach's term expired on May 2021. He doesn't think he is properly on the board. He said Mr. Christmas feels he's under attack. I didn't even see where he come back and finish it.
Uh, council, wasn't there something about Mr. Creach is on until otherwise dismissed?
That is correct. Yeah, members continue on until they either resign or are reappointed.
Under Mr. Christmas, what happened with his case? I mean, I understand, we went through this to the present time for the reappointment or reinstated, but Mr. Christmas, what happened with his case?
Mr. Christmas's variance request is now moot because the city council passed an ordinance amendment that does not require a variance to have a privacy fence in a corner lot. So his variance request, which was, which was filed last year, it was adjourned several times, and now because of the city council passing that ordinance amendment, again, Mr. Christmas's variance request is moot and no longer has to be considered by the CBA.
Excuse me, this is the same question I asked about the signage last year of the church. When this is passed or goes up in front of city council, why doesn't this board get confirmation or anything that it was passed?
Yeah, I would not be able to answer that question, Mr. Creach, I do not know.
I do not know, all I know is Mr. Christmas has withdrawn his request for variance, it is no longer on our table.
How come we weren't notified?
I thought we were.
I wasn't notified, I didn't know nothing about it.
I didn't know it wasn't notified.
I think that notice went out via email, because I do remember seeing it.
Email, I don't have email.
I don't have email.
Well, I know, but that's, yeah, that was a problem.
I don't recall sending an email from our office, perhaps anybody from city administration.
I thought I saw something about that in December, because the meeting was canceled.
I thought he was going to still be coming before us, I didn't know anything about it.
Oh, maybe I'm dreaming.
I agree with you, I could have sworn there was an email or a message that said he had withdrawn his request for variance.
Yeah, that's what I remember seeing.
It's possible. I don't specifically recall any type of email, perhaps I wasn't CC'd on it.
Are you satisfied with that, Ms. Creach, or should we investigate further?
Please investigate, because I'm going, anything else that happens to this board, me and Shirley both, neither one of us have email. So I mean, and to come in and ask a question, when you, and you said it's already been taken care of, how do we know it's been taken care of? That's all I'm asking, is there any way we can do this? Except for just getting sent a letter saying that it was finished, demolished, taken care of?
Yeah, I, well, I could go back and, I don't recall specifically the city council meeting, I think it was in, was it in December?
I think it was in January.
Was it?
We were in January, it was the first couple meetings in January, and the fourth meeting was the secondary meeting. Make sure that's on the call.
Yeah, I, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to go back and find the, the ordinance amendment and the resolution that the city council passed. Ms. Walton's telling me she believes it was in February of this year, and I believe she's correct, I just don't know the correct date, but I can get a copy of that and circulate it to the zoning board of appeals, or, I know Mr. Creach indicated you don't have email, I don't know, do you have a mailbox here at, at city hall that you receive information? Otherwise, we can just send a copy of it to your home.
Please.
Yes, to Mr. Creach and Ms. Peak.
Thank you.
Not a problem, you're welcome.
All right, concluding unfinished business, hearing the public, on to new business, adoption of the 2022 meeting schedule, which would be the third page in our packet.
I make a motion to approve the zoning board of appeals meeting schedule for 2022.
Support.
May I get a call, roll call?
Peak, yes. Creach?
Yes.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Okay. Swercoff?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, Hudson is absent and Lubek?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on to the ele-
Excuse me. On this again too, right here it says, adoption of the meeting schedule. Are we going to hold this meeting schedule, or do we have to wait when somebody says, either we have business or we don't have business?
They have until the deadline to submit any new business, and being done, there will not be a meeting. And let's call it by the chair. Moving on to election of officials. I would ask for nominations for a chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Cliff Wilson.
What did, what'd you say?
I'd like to nominate Cliff Wilson for chair.
I can't hear what she said.
Cliff Wilson.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I appreciate the nomination, however, my own term is growing short, I most respectfully decline.
We both have that issue.
Mr. Albright, under the circumstances, his term ends this year in May, and so does mine, so what would normally happen if someone was elected, or should we just decline nominations?
The, the member could either decline the nomination or accept the nomination, if they were voted into that particular position, they would serve out that position until they either resigned or some, or someone was replaced their position by the city council.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, would you be willing to serve up until the end of your term?
Being no other nominations, I will accept the position until such time as I am replaced.
No, don't say that. That could run into decades.
Are there any other nominations? I just out of curiosity, council, is someone allowed to nominate themselves?
I don't see any problem with that.
Depends on which rulebook you're going by, but I would ask and verify. Very well, can I have a roll call?
Okay, Peak, yes. Creach?
Yes.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Gladney?
Yes.
Swercoff?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Hudson is absent. Lubek?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a point order, was there a second on Ms. Rayford's nomination?
I thought you did. You didn't say anything?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a second for my nomination?
I put no. Well, first I put that you declined, and then you accepted, and then you said no.
No, who seconded, who seconded?
No one seconded?
No one seconded.
I'll second it, Stokes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry, Cliff.
Okay.
All right, that being included, moving on to vice chairperson. And you can't nominate me again.
Harvey, you want to? You want to be vice chairman, chairperson? Okay, I'll nominate him then, okay.
I'll second.
Creach?
I guess.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swercoff?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Hudson is absent. And Lubek?
Yes.
Okay. Now it's secretary.
Moving on, do I have any nominations for secretary? I, of course, nominate Shirley Peak.
And I decline.
I knew she was going to say that.
I've had it for a lot of years. Something tells me we're not going to get anybody else, so.
Would one of her members? Sure. Okay, well, then I will nominate Mr. Stokes.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
All right. Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Peak, yes. Creach?
Yes.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swercoff?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Hudson is absent. Lubek?
Yes.
Okay.
Being, okay, that concludes the election of new officers, I guess I keep the seat. Moving on to discussion of the draft bylaws.
I do have some questions and concerns on them.
All right, proceed.
Article two, membership, nothing is said about alternates.
Okay, council, can you help me out? Who would we refer this back to to include language for the alternates?
Ms. Haw could answer that question.
Ms. Haw?
Good evening, Laura Haw. We can take a look at some language for alternates to include in this section.
All right, is there any other further discussion?
Yep, there was one, I can't remember where it was, and I neglected to mark that one, about the five minutes time.
I have that one marked.
Oh, good.
Re-roll, sir.
And that was for hearings of public?
Right.
As far as I know, isn't that limited to three minutes?
That's in the bottom.
Well, we were, we are going to discuss that when we get there. I was gonna, I was just going to go through my list in order unless anybody else has any concerns.
Proceed, sir.
All right, section two, attendance, second line, it's right under the word city, it says from the meeting, shouldn't it say a meeting?
Huh?
Well, that's, that's grammatically, I think so.
But in looking at it, when you say the meeting-
A meeting they're going to be absent from, yes.
Right. A meeting.
I believe the language as written would be proper, if they're going to be present from the meeting, that-
Upcoming-
Which meeting?
Understanding the upcoming meeting.
It would be the upcoming meeting, that's the way I'm reading it.
That would not just be from any random meeting, it would be, they would notify from the meeting that they are not going to be present for.
Right.
That is written, that's as I would understand it. Any further discussion on that?
Excuse, excuse me, is there any way we could go through and read this whole thing?
Oh, geez. Did you read it?
Oh, yeah, I read it twice. And as I said, I'd like, I'd like everybody to understand exactly what it says.
Or I am, I might, I might interpret it somewhat different than someone else thinks.
All right, I am at a loss for point of order.
Mr. Chairman, if there's a motion to read the entire proposed bylaws in a second, then roll call vote can be taken.
Very well, I have a motion by Mr. Creach to read the full article as written. Do I have a second?
I'll support that, so we can have a discussion on the matter.
Very well, may I get a roll call?
Okay. Peak, no. Creach?
Yes.
Well, we need to have a discussion before we go into a vote.
Oh, well, he-
Very well.
Okay, all right.
I made a motion, it was seconded, now we have a discussion.
Harvey made a motion, you seconded. Uh, Kate?
Now, we need to have a discussion on that motion.
Is there a discussion on the motion?
We've had these bylaws for over two months, everyone's had an opportunity to go through them, mark them up with the questions they have, so that we could efficiently go through them tonight. I don't believe we're going to gain anything by reading them word for word, and then getting into a debate over what people are not happy with. If you have a concern with the language, let's bring it up in an orderly fashion, which is what I was trying to do. That's my thought.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I agree with that.
Yeah, so do I.
I agree.
We have a motion to read it fully, and then second it, and, I'm sorry, we take a vote on the original motion. So once again, we, we have a roll call and a vote.
The original motion is-
To read it completely through.
Okay, so I've got no. Peak is no. Creach?
Yes.
Rayford?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Gladney?
Nay.
Oh. Swercoff?
No.
Stokes?
No.
Hudson is absent. And Lubek?
No.
Okay.
All right, motion having felt, I would proceed to return to discussion of the items. Ms. Lubek, you may continue.
Okay. If anybody has anything prior to the section I'm in, please speak up, kind of want to go through this in order if we can, but on page two, just slightly below the middle of the page, it's section six, conflicts of interest, the second grouping of A, B, and C. My question on that is, what if the member of the zoning board of appeals is in a property that is in the affected radius? The way I'm interpreting this, it says that they will not be able to speak. I would agree with them stepping back from the issue and not voting on it, but I don't think they should be muted, I think they should have the same right as any other resident to speak.
Normally, with my understanding of the conflict of interest, the person doesn't vote, not that they can't speak on the issue, but they just don't vote.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the board may, excuse me, for just, for an orderly process, you may want to just go through and say, okay, under article two, membership, section one, are there any changes that the members are recommending? If not, you can just continue to section two, same thing, are there any changes that any of the members are recommending? If there is, then discussion can be had, if not, then you can just move on and get through all the various sections.
Okay, well, very well.
As a suggestion.
Taking council's advice into consideration, we will start this in the beginning, article one, is there any discussion?
No, not for me.
Article two, membership, is there any discussion? Mr. Creach?
Yes, and, and is the alternate going to be added to the membership?
Yes, we already discussed that.
Okay, it didn't say, we have discussed it, or are you going to look into?
Yes, we're going to look into it and review the language, and it will be revised and brought to us again before we approve.
Thank you.
The zoning ordinance does provide language in section 5050 regarding the establishment
and membership, including the alternates, so we, since that language is already adopted, we would just reference that section of the zoning ordinance and wouldn't need to rewrite that statement.
Okay, could we please include that language, or mention of that language in the membership?
Yes.
I believe that would make section 10.
Okay, where'd you get section 10?
No, section 10 would be the next one.
Oh.
There would be a section 10 that would refer the ordinance language.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, you could just, you could just, you could just reference it in article two, section one.
Okay, so, add the reference to section two?
Section one.
Section one.
Or section one, composition, yes.
Article two, section one.
There we go. Duly noted, is everybody happy with that?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Is there any other discussion on article two, membership?
I have a comment, article two, section three, regarding training, requires each ZBA member to attend four hours of planning and zoning training per calendar year. I would like to see that clarified at whose cost, if the member pays for it themselves, or if it's reimbursed by the city some way. Sometimes these trainings are not, there's a fee associated with them, so I think for clarity, maybe helpful to have that.
I have gone through that training, it is paid for by the city.
It is, okay. As a new member, I'm familiar with that.
You'll go to U of M outlets and go through citizen planner course, and that will be on your time.
Okay.
However, the city will pay for it or find scholarships for you.
Great, thank you.
Moving on, is there any further discussion on article two, membership? Moving on to article three, is there?
Excuse me. I hear it says, I hear, a ZBA member is absent from more than three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings. We don't have any scheduled meetings. How is that going to be read? If we have a meeting this month, and we don't have one for four months, and you missed that one, what hap, how do you?
They're not scheduled, they're only scheduled if there is part of the business.
I understand that, how was this read? I understand that, how was this read?
Consecutive scheduled meetings, if the meeting is not scheduled, it's not scheduled. You'd have to be delinquent, or you'd have to be absent from three consecutive scheduled meetings, the meetings are only scheduled if there is business to discuss.
How would you mean, I'm even going by the schedule? I, I understand what, what you are saying, but I find this hard to believe. If for some reason, the meeting is not scheduled, then the next meeting is scheduled and then for two months it's not scheduled, then next month it is scheduled, is that consecutive? I, I'm just asking.
You're taking the three consecutive meetings and then you would be out.
It would have to be scheduled.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be a scheduled meeting.
Be scheduled.
You'd have to miss three scheduled meetings. If there's a scheduled meeting, you'll get a packet. If you are not at three meetings where you received the packet, then you would be ousted.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just find that, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, you could, uh, the board could put some language, uh, about if an absen, if there's an absence in, it's, uh, it's an excused versus unexcused. For instance, uh, somebody may be, you know, having some type of medical emergency where they're not able to attend. Uh, they may have to travel out of the state of Michigan for, to attend a family matter, um, so, uh, you, the board may want to add, um, either, just omitting the word consecutive altogether and say, uh, three regularly scheduled meetings in a calendar year or add something about unexcused versus excused absences.
Excuse me. Um, this discussion took place a few weeks ago at the planning commission concerning then having to define what is an excused and an unexcused absence. This is not an absolute, the way it's written here. It is said that it shall be grounds. And that means that there is latitude in there. I mean, certainly if someone was out for medical reasons or because they had a child that was ill, certainly, um, common sense would come into play and say that, well, we're not gonna remove the person for that. Whereas if they just are blatantly not showing up, not calling in, that sets up a different set of circumstances. I just get concerned when you say excused and unexcused. Now we have to come up with a list and we have to make a judgment call on that.
Yeah.
And I think that's gonna get ugly quick. Whereas we have the discretion and the latitude in here, it doesn't say that if you hit three, you're out, it's an automatic thing. It says it's grounds to be considered.
Three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings, so the city council can consider further actions allowed under law or excuse the absences. It is ultimately up to the description of city council who appoints us.
Right.
Is that language satisfactory, Mr. Creech?
Well, it, it, the way it's stated and the way it's read, yes. But it then it has nothing to do with this committee whatsoever, it's the city council that comes down to remove it.
Well, they are the ones that put us here, they are the ones that would remove us.
That, that's what I'm asking because it says, in, in other circumstances here, it said he goes by the board.
Yeah, it's not Kirk Blonge, Miss Three, you're out, it's Miss Three, unexcused, then it is referred to city council.
Okay, then, I, I guess, is I, I, I guess what I'm asking is, what's excused and what's unexcused?
Well, you'll, you have to see the circumstances when it arises.
If you miss three, you're delinquent, at that point.
As I say, that's what, uh, Mr. Albrecht was saying.
All right, if we're satisfied with that, is there any other discussion on Article Two, membership? Being none, moving on to Article Three, officers, are there any discussions on the articles of the officers?
I have a couple, I think they're primarily typographical rather than substantive. Um, Article Three, section three, subsection C, shall rule out of order any irrelevant marks, remarks which are person, I believe that's supposed to say personal. Um, and then in subsection D, appoint committees and appoint officers of those committee or choose to.
How did we get to officers?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, are we not on Article Three?
I asked you, was there any?
We were on, we were on section three of Article Two, which was training.
Oh, um, my mistake, I was.
And then there's section four and section five and section six.
Very well.
I mean, we haven't even gotten through Article Two yet and we're already in Article Three.
Very well. I was, uh, remiss in misunderstanding that? Moving on to Article Two, section three.
That's when we said that she asked that question to be paid by the city.
Okay, Article Two, section four, liaison, is there any discussion? Yes?
I thought, I'm trying to make sure I'm sitting, seeing this right. Cause I thought I saw somewhere that council members may be members of the zoning board. So if a council member is on the zoning board, who would be the liaison? Is that, or is that gonna be one and the same?
Right now, there, right now, there is not a liaison.
Right.
Other than the city attorney's office, which I'm a member of, or, um, at various planning commission meetings, uh, there are members from city administration, Ms. Hall, for instance, uh, Ms. Holman, Ms. Walton. Mr. Zmansky's also present here, so, uh, as this is worded right now, uh, that would suffice as a lia, liaison. But currently, under the, the present bylaws, there is no council liaison, there is one for the planning commission, but not for the zoning board.
Okay.
Excuse me, isn't Dennis our liaison? According, according to our bylaws in that?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the, of the existing bylaws, but Ms. Holman is indicating Mr. Creech is correct. In the draft or the current?
In the draft, liaisons are not already according to the ZBA, are planning zoning department staff, agents, and consultants or the city.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Right.
So that is amended in the, uh, the new draft?
Yeah, as I indicated, there's, there's members from city administration, the city attorney's office already present at all the zoning board of appeals meetings. But there isn't an official, um, and I don't believe there ever has been a council liaison for the zoning board of appeals, just for the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion on section four? Moving on, section five, is there any discussion? Being none, moving on, section six, conflict of interest.
When does the ZBA employ anyone?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
When would, when does the ZBA employ anyone?
If they should see fit or be in need of counsel.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, when would, when, what would be the likely scenario that the ZBA would employ someone?
Well, Ms. Rayford, I've been doing this since, uh, two thousand nine and I've never seen the, uh, zoning board of appeals.
Well, I've been here while. But I, I, that's, uh, that's why I was asking the question, I wondered about that.
Yeah, I guess as the circumstances arise, that would have to be on a case by case basis, if the, the zoning board of appeals felt that, the retention of a, a third party would aid in its decision making or processes, then, uh, I guess we would have to take a look at that as it came up.
For example, council, a surveyor, and the unlikely case.
Would we request a survey or would that?
Well, it says the ZBA may employ, we would probably have to put a motion in and pass it and then that would go to the council.
Council for approval.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it's subject to the city council approval. Is there any further discussion on section five, employees? Being none, moving on to section six, conflict of interest, is there any discussion on section six? Being none, moving on to section seven, ex parte contact, is there any discussion on section seven? Being none, moving on to section eight.
Hold on just a moment, I'm reading my notes here.
Very well, returning to section seven, ex parte contact.
I have a note here that references Article Seven, section two, subsection B, two and three.
Okay, that's another. Article seven?
Sorry, Article seven?
Article six, I'm sorry, I can't read Roman today.
Okay, Article six.
It's Greek.
Section three?
Article six, section two.
If we're going in order, should we not wait to do that until we get there?
Well, he's referring that something in ex parte contact is covered under this.
Okay.
Do elaborate, sir.
Made sense when I wrote it, now give me a moment. All right, I'm, I'm understanding my note now. Under that section, what it is describing is the people within the three hundred foot radius that I had previously questioned their ability to speak, even though they're a member of the zoning board of appeals, but not vote. Just wanna make sure that their rights that are being afforded in this section were not being taken away from them in, uh, the previous section that we were on about conflict of interest.
I believe ex parte contact.
Well, I've got one more question on that section. Uh, the very last sentence, if a member of another office is appointed to the ZBA, which is an incompatible office with their membership in the other office, then on the effective date of the appointment. That paragraph there is, is kinda confusing.
I'm sorry, where are you at?
He was in conflict of interest.
The last paragraph in section six.
Oh, you went back to section six?
Or not, not sec, I'm sorry. Section six of Article Two.
Section six, Article Two, okay, so backing up to that.
It's the paragraph right above section seven, you are about to proceed with.
All right, well, I'll.
Yeah, that last sentence, uh.
I'll read it out loud and we'll see how that sounds out. If a member of the ZBA is appointed to another office, which is an incompatible office with their membership on the ZBA, then on the effective date of the appointment to the office, other office, that shall result in an automatic resignation from the ZBA. If a member of another office is appointed to the ZBA, which is an incompatible office with their membership in another office, then on the effective date of the other appointment.
Yeah, I'm not understanding what that means.
It, it means it would result in, um, an automatic resignation.
The language just needs to be added. No, it doesn't, it doesn't even do that, it's a vice versa sentence.
No, that last sentence seems incomplete.
It is incomplete, so it just needs to say the same thing as the sentence before it. The ZBA is appointed to an other, then it's an automatic resignation from the ZBA. If the member of the other is appointed to the ZBA, which is incompatible, then effective date, it results in automatic resignation of the other.
Of the other office. All right, uh.
Excuse me, can, can I ask indirectly, what is incompatible with the ZBA?
Planning, planning and ZBA.
Pardon me?
Planning, you cannot be on.
Planning, thank you.
At one time, they did have a person that served on both, but that has been eliminated by a change in the ordinance, I forget how many years ago. Now, at one time, I'm going to say this and it has nothing to do with the person sitting to my left, but at one time, a person was serving on the zoning board of appeals and was elected to the school board and was told they needed to step down from the zoning board of appeals. I remember that very well, cause I got appointed to that seat. So, I can understand if it's, there could be people that hold positions outside of the city that could be inpa, incompatible with this ZBA. And this is saying that the city has the authority to tell them that they have to step down from that other position.
If there's a conflict.
Okay, is that conflict with the city or the school board?
If you have conflicting positions in two boards, if you're on the planning commission and the ZBA.
But those are both city positions.
City positions.
And that's what I'm saying.
I mean, by ordinance, you can't have that happen.
Right.
So, I mean, let's not even discuss that one. But I, I guess what I, I'm questioning here is, the other office, does the city have the authority to? I, I guess I don't know how to put that.
Let me see if I can help you out, I'm on the school board, and I don't recall anybody telling me I had to step down.
And I don't necessarily mean the school board.
Oh, that.
Okay.
All right.
What this language is proposing to do is just to provide clarity on what would be an incompatibility of office. Uh, if in fact, uh, there was a member who sat on a board, for instance, in another community or on some other office and it was deemed to be by law an incompatibility with their, uh, service on the zoning board of appeals, regardless of whether that language is in here or not, they would not be able to serve. So, what this language is, is just simply saying is that, uh, if there's an incompatibility of office, for instance, a member of the zoning board could not sit simultaneously on the planning commission.
Well, oh. But you, you said in another city, and, and the way I'm interpreting this is that this is saying, okay, you have a person serving on something in another community that is considered in conflict with sitting on the ZBA in East Point. And what this is saying is that if they are appointed to the ZBA in East Point, that's an automatic resignation to a board or commission over which the city has no control, because it's in another community.
But if they refuse to, for whatever reason, make it official in that other community, uh, there would be an incompatibility of office and they could not continue to sit. The city only has, uh, jurisdiction over the members on its board.
That's what I'm saying.
The city's jurisdiction.
And this seems like it's, it's trying to overreach and say, as soon as you accept it here, you're automatically resigning from there, but we don't have the authority to tell
Right.
Another city that that's an automatic resignation.
Right, this language is just providing some clarity and some guidance.
All right, I would ask, uh, councillor, is there legal precedence for that?
What, that, that this, that the city's, uh, jurisdiction doesn't exceed the city boundaries?
Yeah, one, that the city can give somebody an ultimatum, you were serving on planning commission in St. Clair Shores and you're on the zoning board in East Point, you cannot do both as.
Certainly, the, the, the city council could make that determination whether or not to appoint that person to the zoning board of appeals or the planning commission.
And I feel we should add language to include that discretion of the city council.
It would be up to the, the zoning board of appeals, if they wanted that language, I don't believe it's, it's necessary. Uh, cause again, the, the, that would be the action of the city council, but if the board is comfortable or more comfortable with adding that language to its own bylaws, it can certainly do that.
Is there any further discussion or motion?
Excuse me, I, while we're on this, uh, the section, since we backed up the, the conflicts of interest, right here, it says, under Part C, it says during. it says, during deliberation of the agenda item before the ZBA, leave the meeting to remove oneself from the front table where members of the ZBA sit until the agenda item is concluded. Exactly, somebody help me out with that, I can't understand.
For example, I work for a company we service, property managers. There was something before the board where the company that I work for is associated with a property manager and the property manager was seeking a variance, I would have to step down because I am directly involved with that.
Okay.
I would have to accuse myself of that.
Well, I read this up on top concerning a member of all of that, but then when it dropped down, a conflict exists when the ZBA meeting and it has nothing to do, more or less, with the member. But now I understand for clarity, if that's what you're saying, if for any reason in presentation that we have anything to do with it, then we have to step down.
Right.
Under conclusion, does that be the same thing if it's tabled, what happens there?
Well, when it comes back, you still recuse yourself. If there is something on.
No, no, I understand that, but what you were saying is resolution, when you're saying, I step forward and this person has me an interest or I have them an interest, and I step down. If it's not resolved then, I have to take myself from the presence of the next meeting if they come back. Is that what we're saying?
During their presentation, yes.
Until that agenda item is concluded, it's not for the duration of the meeting, it's for that item of business.
Because I'm just going to say, until the agenda item is concluded.
All right, do you feel that you can make suggestions for changing in the language? Or do you care to make a motion on that?
The language changed, I don't exactly understand, until the agenda item is concluded. That, I don't know if you could reword that, rewrite that, or exactly what we'd have to do, but if it's not going to be concluded, especially at that meeting, how would a person remove themselves? That's all I'm asking, I mean, how could I reword that?
If the item is tabled, then when it's back on the table at the next meeting, you would recuse yourself.
You wouldn't leave the meeting necessarily.
Leave the meeting or remove oneself from the front table, remember, okay.
You would step down while.
Well, I just couldn't say, there's another incident in here doing the same thing, but I wanted to make sure that's exactly.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yes, I am.
Very well, any other further discussion? Article two, section six, any further discussion? Being none, moving on, section seven, ex parte contact, is there any discussion? Is there any further discussion? Being none.
I'm sorry. Does that apply to anyone with a case coming before us? What happens in that instance, because we did have that occur?
Mr. Christmas and his emails.
And his emails, right.
As long as the board member who receives that contact is not replying or otherwise responding. The board member certainly can't prevent somebody from the public from, for instance, if you see them in the grocery store and they come up to you and they want to talk about their case, you simply decline to speak to them about that and just indicate that we have a bylaw which prohibits ex parte communications on matters that are pending for the board involving your case, and I'm certainly happy to answer your questions during an open meeting, but I can't discuss your case because it would be a violation of our bylaws.
Thank you.
And then you would report said contact.
Right, and I would recommend that reporting the contact, yes. What you could do, or what the member could do is simply indicate at the beginning of the meeting that the applicant or applicant's representative attempted to contact me, not for any nefarious purpose or anything like that, and I just explained to them that I could not speak to them because of our bylaws and I'm happy to speak to them, you know, during an open meeting.
Is there any further discussion on section seven? Being none, moving on to section eight, acceptance of gifts, is there any discussion? Being none, proceeding to section nine, no voting on the same issue twice, is there any discussion on this section?
I have a couple of questions on it. We have a, which our ordinance doesn't allow. So, it's almost a redundancy to have that in there.
Thank you.
Or was it put in there for the specific reason that if something were to change in the future? Because we did have what they called the ZBA planning commission liaison. It was a person that served on both. The idea being that if they voted on it at one, they would not be able to vote on it at the other meeting. But we had a city council member who thought that that was absolutely a horrible position that could occur, so we should just prevent it completely by not allowing the overlap. So, I'm not objecting to it, I'm just saying it's already not permitted because you can't serve on both the ZBA and the planning commission.
Mr. Lubek, I think you would be a perfect example of having served on planning commission and if there was something that was on the planning commission that would now be coming to ZBA, say in this timeframe, it would not be proper for you to vote on that after you voted as a planning commission member even though you're no longer there.
No, that's obvious, and if that's where you're putting it. It'd be really interesting to see somebody come back for variance, being it's been about 14 months since I've been on the planning commission.
Well, this is in case of said contingency. Noting what you said there, it does say sits present times.
Yeah, it has to be on vote, and since it can't happen, that kind of eliminates that.
Thank you, that was a good, good point.
All right.
In section B, I don't remember what the Michigan zoning enabling act says, Ms. Hall. Do they allow city council or township representatives? And that's a bad example because townships and cities have a completely different set of rules under the zoning enabling act. But does it allow city council to sit on either the planning commission or ZBA?
Yes.
And our ordinances, do they allow that?
No.
No.
But again, if I, and I just mind-blanked on the city manager's name. But, Ms. Walton, I apologize. So, again, you want that language in there, should, because we have had that before where someone ran and got elected to city council or was on city council and then came back to serve on planning and/or ZBA. So, you want that language in there to make sure that, again, they would not be allowed to vote twice on the same issue.
I would defer to you guys to make that decision as a board. I mean, you can also talk with Laura, Ms. Hall, she probably also has a recommendation as she assisted in putting this together, so she may have a point of why that specific language was in there.
Yes, the draft language that's in front of you tonight is a recommendation from the Michigan Planning Association and their work with the Michigan State University Extension. This language is considered a best practice and although it's kind of a redundant because of the ordinance that the city currently has today, the city is looking at updating the zoning ordinance and some of that language may change. So, providing this language in your bylaws today will set you up for the future as opposed to having to go back in another six months or eight months and amend these to make sure that it reflects the ordinance.
Mr. Lubek, is that a satisfactory explanation?
I'm satisfied.
Very well, is there any further discussion on section nine?
Excuse me, exactly, I must have missed something, on B. It said, on the appeal of the administration of other decision by city council and the ZBA member sits both on city council and ZBA. What, what did I miss in this?
They can't vote on the same issue they're sitting on.
If they're on the city council, they can't vote on the same issue that a zoning board is voting on.
If they voted on it at the city council level and it came in front of the zoning board of appeals and they happened to be on both, they could not vote a second time on that issue.
When you said.
Or even going the other way.
But a city council member can't sit on the zoning board of appeals.
Not, yes and no. By state law, they can, by city ordinance, they can't. But even by state law, you're not allowed to vote twice.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, I understand what you just said, but they can't vote anyways, can they, legally?
Not by ordinance.
Thank you.
We did state before the language here is redundant in anticipation of changes we may have to make, so. It's a what-if, Harvey.
Okay, I.
Is there any further discussion on section nine? Being none, moving on to article three, section one, nomination of officers. Let's see if I did this right.
I have a question. In the event that there is only one nomination, is there a need for a vote or just a vote of acclamation?
I would say there would be a need for a vote. You would have to be nominated and receive a majority vote.
Well, no, I get that, but if only one person is nominated, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Well, per the language of the, or per the language of this, yes, you would still have a vote, even if there is only one nomination. Is there any further discussion on section one? Being none, moving on to section two, tenure, is there any discussion on the tenure? Being none, moving on to section three, chairperson duties, is there any discussion on chairperson duties?
I have a housekeeping issue on that one.
Proceed.
Section three D, it says, the committee or choose to leave the committee, I believe that should be let. Yes, that was just a housekeeping issue. That's the problem with spell check, you can spell the wrong word correctly and it won't catch it.
Very well, aside from that, is there any further discussion on section three?
Excuse me.
Please.
B, it says, chairperson's duties, sign all decisions of the ZBA per. Excuse me for saying this, I haven't seen anything signed in the last two years.
I just signed them catching up.
Well, I mean, even before that, is, excuse me, not saying you just signed them catching up, but when even when we receive our minutes or the rest of the stuff, there's no signatures or nothing, nothing on it. It's a piece of paper, as far as I was concerned, considering it's been in black and white for I don't know how long.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the minutes that are in the packet for approval, such as the November minutes that are in your packet, until they are approved, they do not get signed, as Chair Wilson just mentioned. The ones that get signed because calling us up due to absence from COVID, these then go into the city manager's official records, so you will not get signed versions of the official records.
After the meeting, like next month or the next meeting we have, I will sign the minutes for this meeting. If I am absent, then it would be your responsibility as vice chair to sign them.
Okay, then, then the board would never see them.
Right.
They are undocumented.
Okay, I'm not going to say, okay, I just read it, I said, you know, to sign all decisions. It seems to me that we get a copy, but none of them are ever signed.
You won't get them. This meeting will not be signed till next month.
Okay.
Or the next meeting.
Well, I mean, I.
Actually, it won't even be the next meeting, it'll be the meeting after that because the minutes have to be. I just signed meeting minutes from the planning commission from over a year ago.
Okay.
Because of the lag and the not meeting in person issue. And I got writer's crap at one of the planning commission meetings.
When we have a meeting, we take the minutes and the votes, and the next meeting, we approve that. When that has been approved by us, it comes back to the chair for signature and then submission for record. The members will not see it, but the members approved it.
Well, maybe that's getting to the question I asked, or I wanted to ask, ask per se, the minutes themselves, when we don't see them signed, when they come to us, where's the, the acceptance is through you and the secretary?
We take a vote to accept them as a board, and then at the, at the litter date, I will sign them, certifying that we took a vote and we accepted them as a body.
Okay. Earlier in the meeting, there was an approval of minutes for November 18th, 2021. This board approved those minutes. Next month, there will be an official copy here that will be signed by the chair and also the secretary. And those are the ones that go into the official record and those are the ones they are referring to.
Well, excuse me, I understand, but I'm just backing up November of 1921 and I see them and I notice, and none of them are signed.
They're not going to be signed until, we just approved them. How can they be signed if they approved them?
I must have grabbed the wrong one.
At the next meeting, I will sign that we approved the minutes in this meeting.
There's, as I said before too, even at this right here, it's a regular meeting, September 16th, and then the rest of the stuff, I've just never seen a copy signed.
You won't.
You won't.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't.
You won't unless I am absent and then it will fall on you to sign and certify the minutes.
Actually, no, it would still fall on the chair.
Right.
The vice chair will handle the meeting, but the chair still has, as long as there isn't a chair, the chair still has to sign those documents.
Very well, point of order, I stand corrected.
I guess the biggest question I'm asking, and I go at any time up to the front into the office itself and get the minutes from any of these meetings that were signed because it said the same thing about it going back from last year, we were supposed to talk about what happened before this upcoming year. The minutes themselves are supposed to be a packet or an agenda saying our meeting is from last year? Maybe that's where I'm getting down to.
Okay, question, Ms. Walton. Generally speaking, when information from the meetings are put or uploaded online, would that signed page show up there?
They do upload the minutes, yes, so after, but.
I'm not talking about after they've been approved for following, it won't show up there.
After they're officially printed out like actual minutebook paper and they're officially signed, they do go through a process of uploading. It does take a while, you have to get multiple pages organizing them by page, but they do end up online and you can retrieve those for free. If you do want a copy out of the official minutebook, you can go to the first office, they have a computer record, there's a minutebook piece from the fee schedules that copies are pages, and you can actually get copies of the official records.
Thank you, that's what I'm asking, we could go to the front and get the copy, I mean, from all of last year. It says in here, there should be, it should be officially kept.
It's public.
And it will be signed, yeah, it's public.
You can get all that through FOIA, Mr. Creach.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on section three? Being concluded, moving on, section four, is there any discussion? Being none, moving.
Wait a minute, section five, secretary duties.
I hadn't got that far yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Being none, moving on, section five.
Sorry, I was speed reading. Sorry, I, I was speed reading.
Secretary duties, Mr. Lubin.
And it's Lubeck.
Or Lubeck, I'm sorry.
Uh. Section 5, F and G, surely you've really been slacking. In that, in all the time I've dealt with the zoning board of appeals, the secretary has never handled that. The ZBA secretary hasn't. Administrative personnel from the city have handled those duties. So I'm questioning if we should have some language in here to the effect that those duties can be delegated to city administration.
There is language in there.
Section 3, it says that.
Yeah, it does say that.
In parentheses.
Okay.
Wouldn't that have something to do with what goes in the paper ahead of time?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, that's always in there.
Okay.
I mean, I always had seen them, they're always published ahead of time before the-
Yeah, that's in there. I guess I just was speed reading too fast.
All right, that being clarified, is there any other discussion on Section 5? Being none, moving on, Article 4, Section 1, is there any discussion?
Only that it says that the regular meetings shall be held on the third Thursday of each month. There could be an incidence where that meeting would have to be moved for some reason or another. I can't say it'll conflict with Thanksgiving, because that never happens, it's the timing on it. But there may be a situation where, for whatever reason, it could be training, that a majority of the ZBA members are going to, that is only for one month being affected by that third Thursday. And I'm just questioning locking that in hard and fast.
I don't recall that ever happening.
You do have the language in there that says when the regular meeting falls on a holiday. Well, that-
Meeting should be held on another such day?
Shall, meeting shall be held on other such day as determined by the ZBA.
Yeah.
We do have latitude to move it as required.
Yeah, for a holiday. It says for a holiday, doesn't say for any other conflict.
If I may, it says regular meetings shall be held on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in council chambers at East Point City Hall. That's a full sentence, or where otherwise designated by city council.
Or, I'm not questioning, or I'm questioning when.
I'm assuming the time and place is, is the designated meeting.
Okay. It says or where, it doesn't say or when otherwise. I'm questioning locking in a when.
Excuse me.
But that would be determined by the board.
One moment.
According to this.
I, I question the word regular. I think it should be taken right out. Because we have no regular meetings at all. Only when they're called. Well- Oh, yeah, excuse me, that, that's not a regular me, I'm gonna, regular wouldn't that mean that you would meet?
Uh, if I may make a recommendation?
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to change the language to regular meetings shall be held on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM as required in the city council meetings, so I make a motion, we amend that language as such.
I'll support that motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there any discussion on the motion?
I will just say that anywhere where that is referred to that way be changed to that language. Not just in this section, but anywhere else where that may appear in the bylaws.
And which one was that on, at which initial?
Should be Article 4, Section 1. Uh, regular meetings shall be held on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM as required in city council chambers. Any further discussion? And I will amend my motion to, uh, change that wherever that language may be in the bylaws.
And I believe it was in Section 2, under attendance, there is a reference to regular meetings. I know there was somewhere where we had discussed it earlier.
That's Section 2, attendance.
Attendance.
Uh, that does include it, but it doesn't specify. Uh, Section 2 is regarding attendance, but it does not specify the time and date as-
No, but it does say consecutive regularly scheduled meetings.
As required.
That's where I'm wanting it, add additional language in there.
Okay, I'll amend my, uh, motion to include as required in Section 2.
I'll support that, since I supported the original.
Can I interrupt real quick before you make that?
Proceed.
When you, right off the, uh, gate, you always approve your meeting schedule for the year. So when you were approving this, you were, like this one that you, we've already approved, or you all approved, you are already setting all the dates in the schedule, there's no need or reason to change anything, because you are adopting and setting these monthly meetings already, while when you adopt this.
The change in the language is simply saying meetings will be as required.
Yeah, those, those-
By whom?
When we approve that- The schedule, we are not saying all of those meetings are going to take place. They are only going to take place if there's matters that the zoning board of appeals needs to attend.
Yeah, my language merely amends it that meetings are as required. If being no business, there would be no meeting. That would be, uh, the clarification I'd be trying to make. Is there any further discussion?
Can I make just one comment to that?
Please.
Regarding the schedule, I don't know, since I've been here, if there has been a meeting every month. Because we didn't have anything to bring before, so the dates, to me, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, are there for the intended purpose to know when a meeting would be scheduled. Not necessarily that that meeting would take place. Because if we don't have anything to meet about, why would there be a meeting?
I, I, sorry to interrupt you, I agree with that, I think it may be clearer if we added a section to the effect that in the event that there is no business scheduled for a regular meeting, the chairperson may exercise the discretion to cancel that meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, something to that effect.
I, I agree with that language that-
We put that power in the chairperson, there's not so much, um, you know, confusion about what's a regular meeting, you know?
Well, if we don't get a package, we don't have a meeting.
How about just a-
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the way it works.
That lets us know that there's no meeting.
Right, that lets us know that there is no meeting if we don't get a package.
Yeah.
But, I'm, I'm suggesting that adding that language about when we would not have a regular meeting, because there's not business, might be clearer in our bylaws. Because it seems like we keep going back and forth on this, what's a regular meeting, and then we skip this meeting, and we skip that meeting, and then there's, you know, it's on the, it's on the agenda or on the, um, meeting schedule, but we don't have it, so.
But if you don't get a packet, that tells you right there and then, there is no meeting.
We don't operate the way most other commissions work.
We're not supposed to. We're, we should be meeting very infrequently.
Right.
And if we have our ordinances properly written for the city, we will meet very frequently. I'm sure Mr. Albright can tell you what it was like when he first came on board. There were two Thursdays a month he was always here, one was planning and one was ZBA. Until the ordinances were properly constructed to fit what was in our city. I mean, and you, let's take a look at the most recent appeal that was for a privacy fence. We're never gonna get another appeal on that issue for privacy fences again, which was one of the more popular appeals that this board heard. So a zoning board of appeals should meet very infrequently. But we have a set schedule, and we will meet if needed. And, and they're all considered regular meetings, unless for some reason there should be something that come up where we have to call a special meeting that would not be able to wait until a normal ZBA meeting. And special meetings are coming up in a future section here.
All right, with that being said.
So.
Mr. Chair, we will also make sure that city staff contacts, not just that the committee of coordinators do not get a packet, but you will get notifications, there's nothing that's been submitted by the deadline.
Very well.
Can I say something else?
Proceed.
Um, I think, um, I think it was Roseanne that has been sending out emails, and I realize, Mr. Creach, and you know, that you don't have email, but, um, they generally notify us if there's no business coming before us, so.
And it's usually well in advance of a meeting.
All right, uh, any further discussion? I would back up and ask for a roll call on the motion.
Okay, Peak, yes, Creach?
Yes.
Raeford?
What was the motion again?
Add the language as required.
As required, that's what I, I wrote it down here, but then we were saying, yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swarcos?
No.
No, okay. Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, Hudson is absent, Lubeck, yes.
Yes.
Usually my wife does that.
All right, moving on. Section 2, majority. Is there any discussion on Section 2 of majority?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I have a recommendation. On this section, um, I would add, and this would be to provide for if there are, uh, members that abstain on a particular vote for whatever reason. Um, so to, uh, to provide in that, in that instance, I would add the language, uh, present and voting after the word membership on line 3, so the language would read, the majority of the full membership of the ZBA, uh, that is, the number of regular members of the ZBA as established by city council, shall constitute a quorum, and the number of votes necessary to transact business shall be a majority of the full membership, comma, present and voting, comma, of the ZBA.
I make a motion to amend the language.
I'll support that.
Excuse me, can, can you clarify after me?
Yeah, certainly.
In layman's terms, I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to.
Majority of the people that are here and voting.
As opposed to the majority of the board itself, regardless of who's in attendance.
A majority of the board would be four votes.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But a quorum is four people.
Right.
But you might have a situation-
But you could have a three to one vote, which you're saying would be illegitimate for passing the issue.
With this additional language.
With the additional language, whereas you would have had to have all four votes every time.
Right. It would be a simple majority of members present.
Present and voting.
Present and voting. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion? May I get a roll call?
Did, who made the motion?
I made the motion and-
I second that.
Second.
Peak, yes, Creach?
Yes.
Raeford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swarcos?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Hudson is absent, and Lubeck?
Yes.
Okay.
Section, okay, any further discussion on Section 2? Being none, moving on to Section 3, motions. Is there any discussion on Section 3? Being none, moving on to Section 4, voting.
There is a third option that should be in there.
I'm sorry, are we referring to Section?
Section 4, voting.
Section 4?
Yes, no, that doesn't give a person a, an opportunity to abstain for whatever particular reason they may need to.
Very well, you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that under Section 4 voting, we add abstain.
I'll support that. What? Section 4, what is it now?
Section 4, adding language to be yes, no, or abstain.
Well, maybe before we actually vote on that?
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Now that there was, was a motion, uh-
Who seconded?
Does the city attorney or city administration have any input on that?
What was the question, sir?
On Section 4 voting, the motion has been supported to add abstain as a choice for voting.
Yeah, and abstaining is not considered a vote, you're simply abstaining from voting, uh, yes or no. But you could simply, you could add the fact that are the, provide for the ability for a member to abstain from voting on a particular matter.
Because just the way reading this right now, it's just like, okay, we're gonna call the roll, you've gotta say yes, or you've gotta say no.
Uh, you could put language in there that says if a member, uh, abstains, that shall be recorded as such, something like that.
Do we need to clarify an abstention as being a no vote?
It's not, that's, it's abstaining.
It's, it's not, okay, so at that abstention-
A no vote or a non-vote?
Non-vote, thank you.
Yeah, I believe-
Do we not vote instead of abstain?
Yes, excuse me, I, I'm, under that, does there have to be a reason? Would that be clarified in, in, for not voting?
You, you could, uh, have that language in there, but a member, uh, cannot be compelled to give a reason for why they want to abstain.
Yeah, I believe the options of yes, no, or abstain-
Okay, it's fine.
Abstaining should, should be discouraged, um, members take a, uh, an oath to vote on matters brought before it, but in particular cases, there may be a reason that the member is not able to, uh, vote, and that you can't compel that member to give the reason for abstaining, they can just simply stay abstain.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Let's make sure what the motion is we're voting on.
We are making a motion, motion was made to change the language to yes, no, or abstain on Section 4, as a part of the minutes.
How about a member may abstain from voting?
And such shall be recorded.
As opposed to counting it as a vote.
Well, abstain, you wouldn't count that as a vote.
Yeah, it's not counted as a vote.
It's not counted as a vote.
But it still needs to be recorded.
Still needs to be recorded, so.
Yeah, still, yeah.
You can vote yea, you can vote nay, or you can vote I abstain.
I like what we originally had, voting may, shall be by roll call though, and may, and shall be recorded by yes, no, or abstain as part of the minutes. I think that's probably the cleanest way of saying that.
Because on the approval of the minutes, I abstained because I, you know?
You weren't here.
Yeah, so that's what I did.
As did I, I was not here, I don't know what happened. And I don't feel comfortable saying that, yes, that's what happened.
Which is perfectly acceptable for abstain, and it's recorded as such. So I think the language is, is, stands well. All right, uh, motion on the floor to change wording to yes, no, or abstain. No further discussion, may I get a roll call?
Peak, yes, Creach?
Yes.
Raeford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swarcos?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Hudson is absent, Lubeck?
Yes.
Moving on, Section 5, special meetings. Is there any discussion on Section 5? Is there any discussion on section five?
Yeah, I've got a question on that.
Mr. Creach?
Yeah, it says, we have, it says, "It shall be the duty of the chairman to call such meetings when requested to do so in writing by the majority of the members of the ZBA." How do we constitute, do we have to get a, how do I want to put this? Do we have to have a document of some kind in order to get it signed by the members in order to do this for the special meeting?
I don't believe it would need to be in writing. If four members of the zoning board of appeals were in agreement that we need to have a meeting, and they were to contact the chairperson and say, hey, you know, I think we need to have a meeting, and then the next person calls and says, hey, I think we need to have a meeting, and a third person calls and says, hey, I think we need to have a meeting, and the fourth person calls and says, hey, I think we need to have a meeting, you now have a majority that have contacted the chair and let him know there needs to be a meeting. I don't think it needs to be anything formal, and I guess you could actually get into an argument about four people getting together and deciding that we need to have a meeting, which actually would, could be considered a, a meeting that, an unofficial meeting in which a quorum was present.
Thank you, because that's the same question I was going to ask. How can we contact without, as I say, per se, this forum right here to get anybody to agree to it when we actually can't get more than three before it constitutes a member?
You and I talk.
Right.
And then Ms. Raeford and I talk, and then Mrs. Peak and I talk. So, and now we've all talked, and we haven't talked as a group, but we've talked individually, and we contact the chair and say, hey, you know, I think we need a meeting because of these issues. Then you contact them and you say, I think we need to have a meeting. So, I mean, there are ways that that can happen.
Well, I, I just.
It would be very rare, but.
Well, I believe, I see what you gentlemen are saying, but I believe it should be in writing.
Me too.
To, it should be a formal request to the chair, so there is an actual viable trail that the chair has been requested by a majority for a meeting and cannot decide on their own to neglect it. If I've got four phone calls and I decide I don't feel like meeting.
Believe me, you would be called out on it at the next meeting.
All that being said, I still believe, I still believe as written, a written request should do so, or should be submitted, just for the record.
Well, it does say in writing.
Yes. Well, Mr. Creach was saying, why would it be in writing? And I would say that, so there is documentation that four members, these four members made the request.
And that would be the responsibility of the chair to say, hey, yeah, okay, put that in writing.
Yes.
Basically in the form of an email or note dropped off or something.
Email, note, letter, tape it to my front door, mail me a letter. I think, I think the language as written.
Telephone, telegraph, telephone.
Yeah, I believe there should be some record that you made the request. So, that's not unreasonable language, I believe.
Thank you, and, and, and right here, I guess it says, "The members of the ZBA in writing, not less than five days in advance of such special meeting." When, there again, too, I guess what I'm asking is, once a request is made, what would it take to get the meeting?
It would take, once I get a request from four members, I would contact building department, tell them that there's been a request for a special meeting and to schedule, and then at least five days after that, or at least five days before that.
Right, I'm, I'm just trying to put the ducks and roles off, is all I'm trying to do.
Yes. So.
I do have another question on this section once we complete Mr. Creach's concerns.
Yeah, the notice is, it actually should be a, some kind of written verifiable request for a meeting.
Thank you very much, because you, you, well, I can't make X amount of phone calls to more than two or three people because it's concerned, yeah.
You can call each person of the board individually.
I under.
You just can't conference in more than four people.
Right.
Because that would constitute a majority.
Okay, I mean, I. I'd like to get this formatted instead of going through.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I have had requests for special meetings, and I did discuss it with other members, and it did not go forward because there was not a majority. So, it has happened, but I believe that doing so in writing officiates it and holds the chairman accountable to have a meeting if required. Is that satisfactory, sir?
Well, yes.
Is there any further discussion on section five?
Yes.
Proceed.
I'm questioning if there should be some additional language in there that a special meeting could be called at the request of city council, or even the planning commission. Or should that just wait until there is a?
I believe that.
Normally regularly scheduled meeting.
I believe that would, if city council decided to put something on our docket, then that would, that would go on our agenda and would require a regular meeting. So, there's nothing else on our agenda, there's no request for variance, there's no reason for us to meet. City council thinks we needed to meet to discuss this, they would call the building department, put that item on the agenda, the agenda would go out, we would receive packets, and there would be a regular meeting.
Counsel, please allow me.
How does city administration and our planning council feel about that?
Or has there ever been an instance where a city council?
Or, or, you know, even the building department administration, if they felt a, a special meeting was necessary.
Well, they're having.
Should they have the ability to call it?
I'm not aware of it happening in the last 13 years.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see any reason that it wouldn't just go under regular.
Well, you know, there are those oddities that only happen every 823 years.
I think we can cross that bridge if we come to it. I think the language.
Hey, Jeff, did you hear that? And I said, and you would know.
Yeah, he would.
All right, moving on, is there any other discussion on section five?
Well, back in Austin III.
Okay, I want to go home.
All right.
One time tonight.
Moving on, any further discussion on section five, special meetings? Being none, moving on, section six, petitioner attendance, is there any discussion on section six?
Excuse me.
Proceed, sir.
Yes, it says, "The applicant shall have seven days from the date of the notice of dismissal to apply or reinstate of the case. In such cases, applicant must file written request with the city administration, administration for reinstatement." How does that read?
What they're saying there is if the ZBA, and this has happened, has a petitioner that keeps failing to show up for the meeting, that the ZBA can say, okay, you don't want to show up, we're dismissing your appeal. We're not going to hear it, you're not going to get what you want. It says that they will have seven days after receiving notice from the city that their case was dismissed to request that it be reinstated.
Counsel, that sounds good?
Yes.
So, they don't show up, zoning board of appeals dismisses the case, the city notifies them, the clock starts ticking, and they have a, in seven days, they can ask for it to be reinstated. If they show up here on day eight.
Sorry.
To clarify this, I understand what you said, does that mean they don't show up at this meeting?
Exactly.
Right.
If, if for some reason, as I said, they're supposed to show up, and they don't show up, period. Is there any?
I mean, if they show up, we can dismiss it, or we can table it. If we table it a couple of times, we decide as.
Okay, right.
We've done enough, then we dismiss it. They have a seven-day appeal period.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the seven days itself. At what time does it, does it take effect?
Seven days from the date we dismiss it as a body.
No.
Or when they get the notice.
It's the notice.
Written notice.
The date of the notice.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on section six? Section seven, recesses, any discussion? Moving on, Article four, section one, any discussion?
You mean Article five, order of business?
Article five.
I say I'm not the only one, that's Roman numeral impaired.
Excuse me, that doesn't match our agenda.
That's because our agenda that we are working under tonight is under a different set of.
I, I just said it's under a different, what is going to change? Maybe that's what I want to know, is what is going to change? If this is a new agenda we'll be working under instead of this agenda here? Maybe that's the question I'm.
Well, the big change I see on there, and in one case I would argue for it, in this case, I would argue against it.
I don't know where you're going with this one.
The switching of unfinished business with new business.
Right, right.
It is traditional and normal in parliamentary procedure to finish your unfinished business before moving to new business, which proved to be highly impractical in the case of the planning commission that had hours and hours-long discussion on topics that were going to be ongoing for months. And the planning commission found that that was very discourteous to the applicants that had new business and could come in and get their business handled in 20, 30 minutes. You know, having to wait till 11 o'clock at night until the planning commission decided that they were as finished as they were going to be with unfinished business that evening and tabled it to the next meeting. So, in that regard, it made a lot of sense to do that. And actually, there were times where they split the unfinished business. Any site plan reviews and everything they handled first, then they suspended unfinished business to hear the new applicants that came in, and then they concluded with the long-drawn-out unfinished business. Whereas here, my opinion is it would be, there's no advantage to doing this, and it's actually a little bit fairer to the applicants that were here and maybe had to come back a second time for something or other. Let them finish up their business and move on their way before we start hearing the people with new business.
All right, would you create a phrase of that in a motion?
I would. I would make a motion to reorder six and seven, by making seven, six, under the order business.
Making seven, six, and six, seven.
To make seven.
To keep unfinished business.
Before new business.
Before new business.
Right, thank you.
I'll support that, is there any other discussion?
Unfinished first.
That's my job, is there any other discussion on?
He used to be a chair.
I'm sorry, every time Mr. Albright says Mr. Chair, I'm like a dog.
Unfinished would be.
Unfinished would be six, and new business would be seven.
Seven. Any further discussion on the motion? You have a motion before the board?
I do have a question.
Who seconded?
The mouth.
Okay.
Any input from city administration, legal counsel, or planning on that?
Yes, board members, I would just recommend that if, if there is a new applicant before you at your meeting, they will have to have a public hearing. And so, there may, there may likely be neighbors and other residents that are attending that meeting. And so, for them to then have to wait to go back to old business that they weren't a part of seems a little taxing. So, I, I would recommend that you actually keep it as it's written, to have the public hearing, those residents that are coming out for support or against can then hear that new business right away, and then old business where there may not be other members of the public present could be dealt with later.
Excuse me, I, but I understand, that's, I've got down here the same way. Why doesn't unfinished business move up? You're talking about new business, per se, then you've got public hearings. What, what am I missing in this whole, your whole interpretation?
Well, they, they're saying that the way they want the meeting flow is hearing of the public, neighbor speaking for or against, approval of minutes, the public hearing for the specific agenda item, and then the public can come in and speak on the new business. And then, after the new business is handled, then we would move to the unfinished business where somebody has already spoken in a previous meeting on that.
Let me ask.
So, it would be keeping supporters from having to attend two meetings if, for whatever reason, the item gets tabled or postponed.
I've been removed from the ZBA for quite a while, and I'm not clear on the concept of a public hearing at a ZBA meeting.
Well, we're breaking it down into two sections here. There is the, after the approval of the agenda, there is a general hearing of the public where everybody gets their three minutes.
That's not what I'm asking.
And then.
A public hearing is usually for specific agenda items.
In the open.
But under the business of the appeal is generally where the peoples that are in attendance are speaking.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, Counsel, but isn't there something specifically in the Open Meetings Act where there has to be a hearing of the public?
No, that's, that's right.
The hearing of the public is different than a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what the problem is.
A public hearing is specific, specific and targeted to one item.
Right.
Typically, people do speak at the hearing of the public when they should actually be speaking during the public hearing portion.
At the public hearing.
Right.
So, this new order of business is to clarify that. All right.
So, that, if I could get some clarity on a public hearing at a zoning board of appeals meeting, it would be helpful to me.
You know, I don't even remember.
Ms. Hahn?
So, for any variance that's going to come before this board, there will be notice to the property owners within 300 feet and in the newspaper as well. So, that public hearing is for those five minutes for any of those affected property owners to come and speak, or anyone else that has an interest in, in the agenda item. And then, the, the board would then discuss that agenda item, that variance, under new business, and make a decision at that point. Whereas if you have the unfinished business between those two, it's, it's, it's really just subjugating the, the members of the public to a longer meeting before they can hear the outcome of, of the case that they've, they've come to speak on.
I, I'm understanding what you're saying. Perhaps we have been operating in a different manner here, in which the case of Joe Lunchbucket wanting the variance for his garage comes up, it is during. it is during that part of the new business that we've let the public speak on that particular appeal, as opposed to having them speak on that at a public hearing and then go on and discuss the topic without public input.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chairman, there are circumstances, although I've never seen it before this body.
Not in thirteen years?
Not in thirteen years.
I was, again, I was going to ask that question.
Where, where the zoning Board of Appeals may act on matters, for instance, where there is providing for an administrative review, an interpretation, exception, or special approval permit. So, in those cases, for instance, where the, the ZBA is seeking an interpretation, they make, hold a public hearing, get comments from the members of the public to assist it in its interpretation of a particular issue. So, that is why it's, it would rarely be used, but it certainly should be a part of the agenda in the event a public hearing would become necessary. So, I'd recommend that it be kept in the order of business for the zoning Board of Appeals. Again, rarely used. In thirteen years, I've never seen it used, but it should, it should be a part of the, of the agenda.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that as an answer. I said I, I thought maybe we were doing something unconventional the way we handled appeals.
Unfinished was Six, new business was Seven. It's, he's going to keep it like it was, like it is here.
Well, there is a motion.
There is a motion.
Yeah, there is a motion.
By Ms. Rayford that was supported by me.
Yeah.
To reverse those two items.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to reverse Items Six and Item Seven. May I get a roll call?
Okay, Peak, yes. Creech?
Yes.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Oh, no, okay. Gladney?
Yes.
Sirkos?
No.
Stokes?
No.
Hudson is absent. Lubek?
No.
Okay. Doesn't pass.
Item C is...
One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. It's four and four.
It's a deadlock?
How can we have four and four? We're only a seven-member board.
One, two, three, four, and one, two, three, four.
Okay, you're reading the record. Peak, yes. Creech, yes. Hall Rayford, yes. Wilson, no. Gladney, no. Swatkus?
That's absent. No, but this is absent.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's eight votes because there are eight members present.
Yeah.
But only seven votes would actually be included for purposes of passing or failing the motion. So, I believe that there is an alternate that is also voting this evening.
Well, I am an alternate.
So, and we have all of the regular members of the zoning Board of Appeals tonight?
We've got two people missing. Was it one?
One.
One, okay.
Missing one alternate.
All regular members, I believe, are present. So, the alternate members vote while it's being counted this evening, or taken this evening, rather. For purposes of passing or failing the motion, it would not be actually counted.
In that case... So, then, because we have eight people here and I'm an alternate, none of my votes this evening should be counted.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and the minutes will reflect that.
Well, then it passed because then there'd only be three no's and four yeses.
Very well. Motion passes.
Meaning that they are being switched.
That they are being switched.
Excuse me. To clarify, Jeff, it's, you're not, your vote doesn't count. One nice thing about these minutes is you're allowed to join in any time you want to. So, I mean, the only thing that doesn't count is its vote.
Well, I, I guess the next question I have for legal counsel is, I have made motions and supported motions tonight as the eighth person, the alternate. In what predicament does that put us? Because I should not have been doing that.
Well, when do you vote? When we just don't have enough?
You just supported that second.
I'm an alternate. I'm only here to be the sixth or seventh person.
But then you can vote if we didn't have enough?
Yes. The alternates are only to make up a sixth and/or seventh person.
That's certainly an interesting situation. I think for purposes of just...
That's the same question I was going to ask, if, for some reason...
Mr. Creech, will you...
I'm sorry.
I'll write, finish. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. In that case where Mr. Lubek made a motion, whoever... Whoever the eighth vote was on there would simply not be included. I think that's probably the cleanest way to handle it. I don't know if there's any guidance in either Sturgis or anywhere else, but I think under the circumstances. But for purposes of meetings moving forward, there are seven members of the zoning Board of Appeals. Alternates participate when there is a vacancy of the regular membership.
All right, well...
So, just for clarity, who are the alternates? Myself and... Okay.
He was the alternate, okay.
He was an alternate, okay. I guess the fortunate thing on this is we haven't granted or denied any variances, which really would have put us in a precarious position.
I think we're okay and we'll just, a purpose moving forward. Yes?
Just for clarification, we just took a vote. So, to leave it as it was, I said yes, but I think I heard her say that I said no.
Okay. You were gladny, right?
Correct.
And you voted yes?
To leave it as it is.
No, the motion was to change it.
Motion was to change it.
Okay, so the motion to change it to, back to the way it was written, or, because I know you guys switched it.
In this situation, it's, we should re-vote the motion.
Well, I don't think that's necessary, but, you know.
There seems to be some confusion as to, we were leaving it the same or we were changing.
I, I thought it was switching...
Yeah, it was.
The, the motion...
The motion was to switch unfinished business before new business.
And it was deadlock fifty-fifty, and then it was brought to our attention, he is an alternate.
But, but the, but the, the eighth vote would not, would not be counted.
But I think what Ms. Gladney is saying is she did not understand the motion she voted on. She thought she was voting on the opposite of what the motion was. Is that correct, Ms. Gladney?
Yes. Just for clarification again, to keep it as unfinished business first, then new business, is that the way it was, is that the way it's written?
No.
No, that's not the...
Right now it's...
Okay, so it's written the opposite.
Right.
So, I'm voting yes on the opposite.
So, right now, it's new business first and then unfinished?
Let's, let's ask the question a different way. Which do you want first, new business or unfinished?
New business.
So, then it's to keep it the same?
To keep it as it is. Counsel, I would say we would discard our last vote and take another vote.
I'll make that motion.
Just to make, have the maker of the last motion make a motion to rescind that motion, and then we can re-vote.
Okay, that would be me.
Yes, it would.
Okay, I will make a motion to rescind the motion, to switch the order from Seven to, to Six.
And then just have a second.
I was the one who supported that, so I will rescind my, because I'm rescinding my support on a rescinded motion.
I will second the...
Rescind the motion from, are you going back from Seven to Six?
Yeah.
Seven to Six, okay. Okay. Peak, yes. Creech?
I'm confused. I'm totally confused.
I think we need the chairperson to restate what the motion is, what exactly we're saying, if we're having a second motion and a second vote.
All right, let's take this from top, folks. Made a, motion was made to switch the order.
Right.
There is some confusion on whether or not he can vote and what her, what she was...
Okay.
Gladney was voting for. Now, Hall Rayford is rescinding her motion. I have seconded it. There is motion to rescind. So, that will leave it as written.
No, just have, on this motion to rescind, do a roll call.
No.
Motion to rescind.
The, the motion to rescind is to rescind the previous motion. That's all. So, this isn't for a new motion.
Right.
This is to rescind the existing...
To rescind the previous motion.
Okay.
To undo the previous action of the board.
Peak, yes. Creech, yes.
Rayford? Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Sirkos?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Lubek, oh, why we can't...
I'm not allowed to vote.
All right, all right.
He's there. Did a good job of that. All right, motion is rescinded. Is there any further discussion on order of business? Being none, moving on to parliamentary procedure. Is there any discussion on Section Two? Being none, moving on to Section Three, public participation. Is there any discussion on public participation?
Yes, there is.
Make it as brief as possible, sir. Proceed.
Okay. Item C, a maximum of five minutes, is contrary to the time limit set by city council, which is three minutes.
Very well. Does someone wish to make a motion?
I'm going to change the time. Allowed for public participation from five minutes to three minutes.
Not unreasonable. I will second.
Administration, planning consultants, your input on three or five minutes? Legal counsel?
The five-minute recommendation is coming from the Michigan Association of Planning to give property owners more, more of an opportunity to present their concerns and case to the board. It's up to your discretion.
For a vote? Okay, Peak, yes.
I'll... Any further discussion?
Oh.
None. Motion to change five minutes to three minutes? Make a roll call.
Five minutes to three minutes. I wrote it the wrong way then. Okay, five minutes to three minutes, okay.
We got it this time?
Okay. I'm going to do no on that one. I sometimes think people don't have enough time to talk, and others talk too much. Creech?
No.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
No.
Swisskow?
No.
Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, Lubek, no. Okay, one, two, three, four. One, two, three, it didn't pass.
Motion, uh, motion is valid. Stays at five minutes. Any further discussion on Section Three? Being none, moving on to Section Four, delivery of agenda.
I'm just questioning whether or not we should specifically state that they can be emailed. I know some people don't have it, but I don't want to take that tool away from those that do have email.
I disagree. I think the delivery of our package informs the members that there is actually going to be a meeting.
They would be just as informed whether it showed up on their door.
We have two members that do not have emails.
I'm not eliminating that. I'm just saying, let's include the option of email. The way this is written, it, it excludes email. It says we cannot use email, because email's not permitted. And that's what I'm objecting to.
I appreciate that, but I would argue otherwise. I think we should have a packet delivered.
I like that idea, too. I do, too.
I think either way, the language probably needs some revision, because as it is, it says shall be delivered, mailed to ZBA members.
Shall be delivered or mailed?
Delivered by mail or email.
Shall be delivered by mail.
By mail.
Delivered by mail.
Hand or email. However, as it stands now, I think it needs some revision, however we want to specify.
Excuse me, I'm, it, it's not delivered by mail. It's, it's delivered by the...
It's hand-delivered.
Right.
Hand-delivered.
Yeah, hand-delivered.
I think, uh, we need a comment there.
Shall be hand-delivered or emailed? And, you want it and?
They'll be delivered.
They've put it in my mailbox, they've put it at my side door, and they've handed it to me.
Shall be delivered and emailed. That's, I think it should be or, but Ms. Omen says both, right?
Whatever your preference is, is what we'll do. We have on the board that there are certain members that do want it delivered, like Miss Keith, and if it's Creech, their package will be delivered. But there are members that are okay with just emailing, and we will just email and save the trip to the house.
Would you care...
Some council members strictly receive their packets by email. There are other council members that do receive it in person. So, it would be up to your preference to the purpose of how you'd like to receive your package.
So, for the purpose of the bylaws, then it would be delivered or emailed?
Would you care to put that wording in a motion?
Well, email could be a form of delivery.
Yes, it could.
You could use and/or just to clarify. So, I mean, we can send out a packet by email to everyone that does have email. Those of you that do prefer a hard-tapped packet, we still deliver a hard-tapped packet.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to change the language of Section Four of Article...
Article Five, Section Four.
Article Five, Section Four, to say the agenda and accompanying materials shall be hand-delivered and/or emailed to ZBA members.
All right, we have, um...
So, what if you're not home? Have they put it in the mailbox like I've gotten many times?
I got mine in the mailbox last time.
Or at the side door? Why does it just have to be hand? What if we're not home? That don't work.
As opposed to mail delivery? Hand delivery is to your address.
Hand delivery as opposed to United States Postal Service? Or FedEx?
We're not able to give it to your mailbox. It's not legal. We should not be doing that.
Yes.
Inside your door, inside your door.
Well, I've had it enough.
Me, too. Last time.
They hand it to you, but if you're not there, they will leave it behind your portions anyway. Or if you give a specific direction of where it should be if you're not home, you do a...
Does that really work?
Let's keep it pertinent here, please. Motion on the floor, you made a motion to change it to company material shall be hand-delivered or emailed to ZBA members. So, reasonably expected?
I believe it was and/or.
I will second that.
Excuse me, question on the...
Was it and/or, or was it or? I believe it was and/or.
Yeah, it's, I second the motion. Is there discussion on the motion?
Discussion on the motion.
Yes, Mr. Creech.
Hand-delivered. Does that mean hand-delivered? Because just like me and Sherwood were saying, ours was put in the mailbox last time.
Well, that is an error that should be taken up with the city. They will talk to their carriers.
I always got it, you know, I mean...
Yeah, but...
I've never had a problem with receiving it, never, ever.
Uh, well, that is not pertinent to the motion. If they're not delivering it properly, we can take that up with the city.
And the language does say so it is reasonably expected to be received. So, they may not be placing it directly in your hand, but if it is at your front door that you exit and enter your home, it's reasonably expected that you will receive it.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? May I have please get a roll call?
Peak, no. Creech?
Yes.
Rayford?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Sirkos?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Did someone second that motion?
I did.
You did, okay.
One, one, two, three, four, passed.
Very well. Moving on, Section Five, Minutes and Records. Any discussion on Section Five? Being none, moving...
Excuse me. On, on the records themselves, it says that they shall be kept... Like I said, I'm going by even last year, as I said before, too. It said we should have had a meeting to discuss what we supported and didn't support for last year. And if it's kept on records, why wasn't it brought to the meeting? To this being, considering, this is the first meeting of the year, and there was no... no correspondence with what we did last year.
Every meeting that you have, when you approve the minutes, that is your correspondence from the previous meeting that you had.
I understand.
Okay, well, that would be your, your, whatever that, however many in that, in that year, two, five, seven, whatever it might be, every month or every meeting you have, you're already acknowledging your receipt of the discussion of any other previous meetings, because you, your, in your meetings that you're approving, or minutes I should see, approving, that would cover that. And we don't, as far as having the, I'm speaking out of turn here, but have all the records carrying right behind us that you can have right then and there. You have...
It just says, in my apparent knowledge of reading this language, it said we should receive what we accomplished last year.
There is nothing that says, oh, attachments and summaries and actions supporting, there's nothing that says specifically that there is an annual review.
Yes, there is. It's in article seven.
Thank you. I was gonna get there.
Well, we're not there yet.
I'm sorry.
Is that okay?
I apologize.
Very well. Any further discussion on section five? Being none, moving on to section six, retention.
I have a question on this here, because I'm not sure if it's part of it or not. Many times I have gone to the office requesting why, in the past years, we have not signed these annual disclosure statements. We have not signed them for 2018, 19, 20, and 21. Why was it so important up to that point to do it all the time, and now we weren't asked for the last four years?
Shirley, I believe that would be a point of discussion for closing comments.
Okay.
This is specifically...
Okay, sure.
This is specifically discussion on section six, retention.
Well, I didn't see, because it said oaths of officials. That's what made me wonder.
You can bring that up at, at closing comments.
All right.
Any discussion on section six, retention? Being none, moving on to article six, appeals and hearing, section one. Is there any discussion? Being none, moving on to section two, hearings. Is there any discussion? Being none, moving on to section three, notice of decision. Is there any discussion? Being none, moving on to section four, deadline for action. Is there any discussion? Being none...
Excuse me.
Mr. Creech, proceed.
Yeah, the deadline of action, it said that ZBA should hear a case and render and file its decision with a statement of reasons for the decision, which the city administrator not more than thirty days after receipt of the case, unless a longer period is mutually agreed upon by the petitioner and ZBA.
Oh, what?
My question is, have we rendered? At the meeting, we went one way or the other. Either we said yes or no. And here it's not. It says the ZBA shall hear a case and render the file its decision with a statement of reasons. And yet it says not more than thirty days after. Didn't we render it at the meeting?
If I can comment on that, Chairman?
Please.
There could be a situation where there are some questions that come up and may need further clarification. And I don't know that this actually precludes tabling the issue, but I think what it's saying is if the issue isn't tabled, you have up to thirty days to decide on it. You do not have to decide at the meeting. But generally, when there's been questions on it, it's been tabled until a subsequent meeting.
So this is simply saying...
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is in coming from the State Zoning Enabling Act? So that language is just keeping even with that.
So they're just saying that when the petition is submitted, they have thirty days to hear it, and at the meeting it can be voted on, or at the agreement of the petitioner and the ZBA, we can table it to a later date, but it has to be heard within thirty days.
Now that, if you put that in there, I can understand it. But I'm just gonna say, mutually agreed upon by a petitioner and the ZBA thirty days after.
We have to hear it within thirty days, and then we can vote on it or postpone it, if it's agreeable to our part, all parties.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, section four? Being none, moving on to section five, other hearings. Any discussion? Being none, moving on to article seven, annual report. Any discussion on the annual report?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I've been here four years, and I've never seen it.
I seem to recall that we have had them on the first meeting of the year. But it's, we're reviewing bylaws, not past performances. So the issue here is, is there any discussion on the wording of this article as it is written now?
Correct me if I'm wrong. It says it shall make a written report to the city council of the work of the ZBA during the preceding year. Isn't that the year before proceeding, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And if they were to submit that report to city council on December 31st of 2022, it would still qualify for the summing up of what happened in 2021. It doesn't say that it has to be done on January 1st. It's just said that sometime during this year, the report has to be made on last year.
Okay, I, excuse me. I understand that part, but in the last four years, I don't remember one time it being done.
I do.
You do? Okay, I'm sorry.
Generally, towards the first of the year, there's an agenda item added, which is...
Well, I mean, I was looking at the last, you know, I mean, when we had last year, I'm sorry, the meetings we had had nothing to do with, you know, making the report, the annual report. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'd have to look back into it again.
Well, we'll check on that later, but this is discussion of the article, not past performance.
I apologize. You're right.
So you can bring that up at closing, sir.
I apologize.
All right, is there any further discussion on article seven, annual report? Being none, article eight, amendments. Is there any discussion on the amendments? Being none, moving on to article nine, adoption, which we should not do yet. I think we should table that until next meeting, and amendments are made. All right, is there any further discussion on the bylaws? Being none, I would move to board member comments. Mr. Creech?
I apologize for myself, maybe none of the other members, or the rest of it, but being a member for four years, I have never seen a copy of our bylaws. And I don't believe of anybody else that I know of either ever asked for or have had them. I don't know, Shirley, you have a copy of ones?
Well, of course, a lot of things that we've got all the time.
Okay, well, you, I didn't get them. I didn't receive them. See, I'm gonna say, because I don't know if we were supposed to get them at the meetings or what, but I've never seen a copy of the bylaws.
Oh, well, we're fixing that now, Harvey.
Thank you. I'm hoping to say the same thing that...
Does anyone have an answer for these disclosure statements?
I believe city manager will look into that and get back to us at a later meeting.
I know what you're talking about.
Well, they knew what I was talking about when I would go in and ask about it, and they would always say, well, we have to get to it. But for 18, 19, 20, and 21, we've never signed anything. That was so important when we first come aboard, that we had to do that every year. It was a must.
Ms. Walton?
I've just been informed from our fire rate, so we'll look into it and we'll follow back up.
Very well. Any further comments from the board?
Well, it's nice to see everybody face to face. It's past my bedtime, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
All right, Ms. Lovett?
I remember the disclosure statements came about, probably about twenty years ago, when the city passed a very ill-thought-out and poorly implemented ethics ordinance. And I guess I'm questioning, is I know they've updated it since then. Has perhaps those disclosure statements been eliminated as part of that ethics ordinance? I don't know. Other than that, I'm looking forward into getting into some zoning board of appeals training, because it's fascinating.
Mr. Stokes, any comment?
It's nice to meet you all.
All right, that being all, it was a productive meeting, a lot more interesting than I was expecting for a bylaws review. Thank you all very much for coming, and we will see you at the next meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I stop everything. She's sitting out there. Ms. Gladney, do you have any comments for the board?
No.
You sure?
Positive.
All right.
I'm ready to go eat.
All right, thank you very much. That being said, may I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, second, yeah. Okay.
Peak, yes. Creech?
Yes.
Rayford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Swarcus?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Pleasure meeting you.
You had a spicy one for your first meeting.